Good afternoon and welcome. First of all, Happy New Year to everyone. Good to see you all in 2025. We have some new council procedures and rules, so I'm going to take just a quick second to let Mr. Wright kind of brief us on how this will all work in the new year, and then we will get into our session. Mr. Wright. Ms. Fisher, please call the roll.
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Councilmember Klitschke.
Present.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present. Mr. Wright.
Oh, thank you. Yes, so as council members are aware, and perhaps the public is aware, we've revised the format for the coming year so that we don't have briefing sessions anymore. We have what are called agenda review sessions. And the purpose of these is actually, as it sounds, is to make it a little bit more self-explanatory, to review the agendas that are before the council and give council members an opportunity to either move items along, to defer them, to even withdraw items from the agenda at appropriate times. And then at some point, you would approve the final agenda, you would approve the draft agenda, and do we approve the updated draft?
Just the final.
Just the final, okay. I'm looking at Mr. Byrd because, you know, he seems to know this process a little better than I. But, so the purpose of your session today is to go through the items, much as you did before, on the agenda and determine whether there's anything on the agenda for tonight, which would be a final agenda, and ascertain whether there are going to be any changes, and there are some amendments, of course. Vote on the agenda and finalize it. And then you would review the draft agenda for next week and determine whether there are any items that would alter on that agenda. Is there anything else you suggest we bring up?
Just wanted to point out that the reason for these adjustments was primarily to allow council members and the public additional time to sit with amendments after they've been adopted. So we took that week that we put previously on the submission deadline for committee. We took that week that you would have to submit early to committee and put it in the middle of an agenda review session and amendment adoption to allow the public and council more time to digest the amendments that are being proposed and/or adopted.
So just clarity for the 13th, we will be approving that agenda as well? Or is it still in draft form?
It would be, yes, you would approve that as a final agenda. It's a little funky. We'll need to ask for some grace from council members and the public as we transition into this new model because with meeting cancellations and having not met the last week of December, the last two weeks of December, you didn't have an opportunity to look at the January 6th agenda on your normal timeline. So normally, you would have looked at that last week and adopted amendments and then made a motion to consider that the final agenda for January 6th. Since we were off last week, we're kind of doing a double briefing. We're doing that today.
Right. Any questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Wright and Mr. Byrd. We are now graced with the presence of Ms. Maggie Yates, filling in. Welcome, Maggie.
Thank you.
First of the year. And we will start with January 6th and go from there. Also, items will not be briefed unless they have been requested by a council member. So currently, we have some requests.
Yes, so first up, you have some appointments for boards and commissions this evening, and then jumping down to item number one, it looks like there's a Wilkerson proposed amendment up for consideration.
Yes, and that was going to be briefed by, Mr. Wright, you want to take that first?
I could take that. That's fine, yeah. This item relates to a contract agreement between the county and the city on historic preservation services. Historically, the city has assisted the county with historic preservation matters. The last time, I think this was before council, the status of the contract was a little up in the air on the county side, but since that time, the county has approved this form of the contract, including the term, which I think is just a two-year term and a $45,000 a year compensation. And the only reason for the amendment is that the version that was returned from the county was in a slightly different format, not really anything substantive changed, they just did a different format. So this will allow the council to approve the version that's actually been approved by the county, and then they can move along and finalize this, so.
Maggie, was there anything you wanted to add to that? All right, thank you. Any council questions on that? All right.
Okay, moving down to item number 10. Oh, sorry.
Move to adopt the Wilkerson amendment.
Second.
So move to the second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes, abstentions, thank you.
Now, moving on to item number 10. We have Dr. Darren Nevin here to brief on the consistent care contract if council has questions for him, and he's joined by two of his team members.
Come on down. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Darren Nevin. Thank you for having me. We, before you, is a proposal to continue the hotspotters program, which we performed on emergency basis for three months.
We'll take a moment to check our phones to see what's buzzing.
Voice silenced.
I think that's me.
Looks like a long one.
So starting over, there's a proposal to continue.
Mine hasn't hit yet, just FYI, so.
Are there silence or?
And mine hasn't either, so I might get interrupted. So just historically, we were awarded a three-month emergency contract to navigate people that were high utilizers in the downtown corridor of the court system and the police system and the emergency services system from June, July, and August, and we did that, and we've continued doing that. There was an RFP, a competitive RFP, to continue these services, and we submitted an application and were selected for that. And this is to go forward with another year of navigating the intensively vulnerable people in the downtown corridor that utilize court, police, and emergency services into stabilization. Primarily, what we're doing is getting people into substance use disorder treatment. We're also getting them into mental health treatment. Sometimes we provide that on our own and filling in all the other gaps. It requires a tremendous amount of customization. It's kind of like being a realtor or lawyer. Every case is different. It requires a lot of hand-holding and a lot of crossing the Ts and dotting the Is and navigating our healthcare system, quite honestly, which has its form of dysfunction, but we have learned how to master that. And we've been doing that today, actually, all day in community court, taking people that want help. And that's our biggest barrier, is finding the people that want help and getting them where they need to go, which is mostly into substance use disorder treatment. So with this proposal, the city can say, if you want help with your substance use disorder, your severe mental illness, and you don't know where to go, yeah, there's lots of places in town you can go, but this service will help you navigate and get to where you need to go.
Any questions? Councilmember McHattcart.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if you can quantify, but in the last six months, as this has been going on, I mean, can you tell us, you know, how many success stories you've seen, how many people have either exited homelessness, or at least kind of helped beat the addiction, or, you know, start getting treatment and improving their lives?
Yeah, we have been keeping stats. We do have our own apartment, and we did put one person living in a car in an apartment that we sublaced, and I'm going to have Tina do the stats because we were anticipating that question.
Thank you. I'm Tina. I'm a social worker with consistent care. So this wouldn't be quite as long as that time. I've only been with consistent care since August, so this data will be present since August. But so far, we have navigated, we've had 12 people successfully, or complete our program and go all the way through. Right now, we have about 25 active cases. In total, during this time, we believe we've helped close to 50, 55 people. Might be just as high as 60 navigating in. Nine have been successfully navigated into inpatient, and probably half a dozen, maybe as many as 10 others, have been navigated into outpatient treatment or connected with methadon and suboxone services. I can keep going.
And then, yeah, we've given a lot of people phones.
Yeah, we've distributed about 30 cell phones to members of the population who have hard times staying in contact with others. We have received successful communication for a duration of two weeks following giving a phone from roughly 70% of those individuals. So it does seem that those who are ready and engaged in treatment are taking the steps necessary to get there and are cooperating with consistent care as they do so.
Any other questions? Thank you. We're glad to hear that there's success. I count even one successful, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, on to item 11. Dan Buller is going to brief this item.
In theory, I've been called for two items, so which one is number 11?
I think on this, on tonight's agenda, it is the low bid of Liberty Concrete.
Okay. Were there specific questions about Liberty Concrete, or you want me to brief this the old-fashioned way?
Yeah, the old-fashioned way, if you would.
Okay. Well, Liberty Concrete was the low bidder. I don't, wasn't prepared to do that, so I don't have the numbers there. I assumed that the question regarding to Liberty Concrete was going to have something to do with Teal Riverier, which I am prepared to talk about, but they were the, shall we go that angle?
So I just, I just wanted to know, you know, we're spending a million dollars on the pedestrian improvements, just kind of wanted to know what, what those improvements are, what they're going to be, yeah.
Okay, so the, in the, in the pie's agenda item, yeah, it's expensive. There's sidewalk along Hartson and Fur on one side, and some bumpouts to avoid some trees, and then there's sidewalk on a north-south street, but it's not a lot more complicated than that.
And so this, did this come from traffic calming, or how is this one funded?
No, this one is a state, there's, there's, it's, do they are state or federal? Sometimes safe routes to schools can be either funded by the state, or it can be funded by the feds, I believe. This one is the state version, so it's, it's almost entirely grant.
Wonderful. That's what I was wondering, was, was it a safe route to school? Yeah, great.
We'll bring you back up for the next item under the January 13th agenda, after this one, thank you.
There is nothing else? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, hang on, before we.
We're still on the sixth.
Yeah, because I thought we might have had, I thought we might have asked for something else, but I can't remember.
No, it's on the advanced.
Okay.
So it's been moved to the second to approve the January 6th agenda. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes, abstentions? The January 6th is approved. On to January 13th.
Okay, so the first item to be briefed under the consent agenda for the 13th is item number three relating to inclement weather contracts, and I believe Melissa Morrison will brief us on that.
Good afternoon and thank you. So this is for the inclement weather contracts, adding $50,000 to the inclement weather contracts for the Salvation Army, Catholic Charities, Volunteers of America, and Revive, and also including in the contract clarity around data entry into the shelter me application.
Councilmember McHattcart. And Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, I mean, the crux of my question is just, who is being directed to the Way Out facility specifically? I mean, this has been a huge point of contention. Councilmember Stratton and I fought for months and months and months to prevent this from being a low-barrier shelter. It feels like everything is pushing it that, back that direction, which is only going to harm the people who are actually there, improving their lives. And so I'm just trying to understand, are we only putting curated, identified individuals who are transitioning in that facility, or is this going to be a low barrier and it's just open to anybody?
I will have to get back to you on that. My understanding is that as an inclement weather shelter, it's, they're surging when the need is there.
Well, I would just reiterate, this is a transitional housing facility, and the folks there are improving their lives, and to bring them into connection with folks who are in a very different space is, I think, so inappropriate and just not the right thing to do. There's a reason why the council fought for months and months and months insisting that this not be a low-barrier shelter, and insisting that we adopt good neighbor agreements, which I haven't seen for this or the others. And, and I think that that's really important. And so we should have more of a public dialogue around, if this is the way we're going to do it, we should have more of a public dialogue around why we're pushing some of these individuals into spaces where folks are really trying to improve their lives.
Councilmember Bingle.
That was just going to be mine, as well, is the Way Out Shelter, trying to be really protective of that and the people who are in there, you know, the people who are there are in a different state than, than some others in, you know, on their, on their way to self-sufficiency, and it would be, it'd be a shame to harm some of the individuals and, and their path by bringing in folks who are not on the same trajectory. And so, for me, it's, it's not that we're providing the inclement weather beds, I just hope that we could find somebody else outside of the Salvation Army, specifically that Way Out Shelter. Yeah, that's it.
So Melissa, could you just speak to how they came to be part of this? Because we, we did not push, did they not submit or participate in this process?
It was the, it was the RFPs that we received. I mean, we received, we didn't receive a broad number of RFPs to do the inclement weather sheltering. I think, you know, we can, as CHHS, we can set up a conversation with Salvation Army to discuss the concerns of council members and what actions they're taking in place to, you know, make sure that the folks that are part of the Way Out Shelter are, you know, receiving the services that they need in an appropriate way, and the folks that are in the inclement weather sheltering are also receiving appropriate services.
And so, the RFP went out for $200,000, and then the Salvation Army responded to that RFP.
Yes.
So it wasn't, we reached out to them, we just put it out, and they responded, the Salvation Army didn't.
Yes.
Because that could change the nature of the conversation, too, where maybe we call the Salvation Army and say, hey, this was, the whole purpose of the Way Out Shelter was to do this, and so could change the nature of our, of our conversation as well, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I just want that clarity that it was a RFP process, and they did submit, so it wasn't like we were out there beating the bushes. Any other questions from Melissa on the Councilmember Klitschke?
Is it possible that they have a plan to separate these populations?
I, I can follow up with them on that and see what, you know, how they're, they have now opened the Way Out Shelter, or the inclement weather sheltering, so to see what that, that looks like functionally.
In that, in that building, there's a basement that I think that they have, that's frequently been talked about, yeah.
So, thank you. At some point, maybe a follow-up for council members, that'd be great, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions regarding that? All right.
Thanks, Melissa. Next, I believe Carrie Cedarquist is going to brief item number four on eviction prevention funds.
Hello. Thank you, Council. So we are requesting permission to enter into contract with SNAP Catholic Charities and Transitions, who were selected to hold accelerated spend-down contracts for these eviction prevention funds, which are managed by the city and come from Commerce. The portfolio is, the original amount of 3.4 million was originally granted out to three subcontractors, and then due to slow spend-down, we recaptured some of those funds. And then we also reviewed our administrative needs and determined that there was an additional 600,000 that was eligible for, for RFP as well.
Councilmember Dillon, and then Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, can you just elaborate a little more on the slow spend-down when we've had over 2,000 evictions in 2024? It seems like this has been a record-high year for evictions, so how does that correlate?
Yeah, so as far as monitoring the slow spend-down, we review those existing subcontracts, and we would, would have anticipated to see by the end of year one, half of the funds expended, and we did not. So that was part of the conversation of, do we continue to provide support to these, or do we, do we need to put them out for RFP?
Councilmember Bingle.
And I think to Councilmember Dillon's question, is it just a, is it a question of us connecting folks to resources that exist if we're not able to get them out fast enough? Is that an issue that we're experiencing?
Well, I think we found that with some of them, some of the sub-granties, it was a need for increased administrative support to get their programs up and running, and then once they did get up and running, we saw that spend-down accelerate, and then for others, we did not. And so in an effort to really ensure that those resources are equitably distributed across the community and where it's needed, we had those discussions about reallocating them.
Okay. And then I'm, I know that Family Promise has participated in these before, was Family Promise in this, in this grouping of dollars to, to help prevent families from falling into homelessness?
So they're currently a sub-grantee under the original contract, the 2023 to 2025, and they did have some funds de-obligated, and then, so they, they continue to have funding, but just a portion was relocated for RFP.
And that was because they weren't getting the money out fast enough?
And so when you say fast-track, what is the timeline that we're speaking of here?
So it'd be January 1st to June 30th of 2025.
So six months.
Six months. Otherwise, those funds have to go back to the state.
Do we, have we connected with those agencies or providers to really, truly understand, you know, what those roadblocks were in terms of getting the money out?
We did, yes.
And, and they just said it was simply that they weren't set up?
So some of them are, well, it just depends, because two of three of the original contracts were by and for organizations, and so they have a little bit different of a process for accepting referrals. And then they also have different program implementation models that provided a very holistic wraparound service that meant fewer individuals receive assistance, but over a longer period of time. And then, sorry, a secondary question.
Well, just, just trying to better understand. I guess I would just follow up. So we were talking about Family Promise and them being de-obligated. I mean, they've, they've got such a high success rate in what they do, I guess I would really wonder why we wouldn't actually double down and provide more funding so that they can build themselves up even more to, to get that funding out the door.
Yeah, so like increase their capacity to administer. Yeah, so that's, that's a great suggestion. I think they're definitely a cooperative partner. I think the intent was to have more places for people to access that assistance, more than just Family Promise.
Thank you. Last question. Are there, is there an outline of kind of what individuals' requirements they have to meet in order to be eligible for accessing these dollars?
Like at the household or client level?
Yeah.
Yes.
And do you know what those are?
Yeah, so it's at risk of homelessness or at or below 80% of your immediate income.
So anybody who's at or below 80% can apply for these funds? Do they have to be on the verge of eviction? I mean, are we looking at their rental history?
There's guidelines that Commerce sets out for us, and, and so each organization would have those in front of them as well and advertised in their services. So if, do you want that specific?
Yeah, it'd be, I mean, it'd be great to get the details.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I guess if there was, you know, if we're having trouble getting the, the monies out the door, if there was like a one-pager that I could share with my neighborhood councils of like, hey, if you have people experiencing this, you know, here's a program for them, I think that would be helpful for me, and I'm assuming the other council members as well, this would be helpful, and might help us to accelerate getting those dollars out the door, too. Because, I mean, we would hate to lose those dollars, but even more than losing those dollars, we would hate to, you know, not be able to connect folks to services if they're, if they're there, so. Does that exist? Can we get a one-pager from you?
Sure.
Wonderful.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Do you receive audits or reports at the end of the contract as to how many families have been helped?
Yeah, we can look at that through our HMS.
Okay. And piggybacking Councilmember Cathcart's comment for the, what folks have to, or the requirement for them to receive assistance, being involved in several community centers, I have heard families say that some of them will not or can't apply because they have, they've been told that they have to be two months behind rent, so they are qualified for assistance, and then once they bring or qualify for the assistance, then they can't do anything about them, or they come back and say, we are out of money. So have you experienced or had any feedback on that?
So them not being eligible, and then once they are eligible, not having any funding?
Yeah, they're being told to not pay, or they have to be at least two months behind rent, then ask them to come back, and when they come back, they're either, the center is out of money, and then they become evicted.
I don't know that I've heard that about specifically, but I can certainly look into connecting maybe with some families who have.
We can talk on the side and let you know.
Provide like a feedback session from those, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. We certainly don't, it's easier to keep them in a home than to get them in one, so that's our goal. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Greg. Moving on to the legislative agenda for January 13th, it looks like there's a Wilkerson proposed amendment for ordinance C-36629.
Yes, and we have someone from Planning is going to come down. Planning and Planning is coming down to speak to that.
Good afternoon, council members, council president. So this agenda item was presented to you at the December 9th Urban Experience Committee. Between that committee and now, there's been discussions with Development Services Center staff, there's been some concerns about some of the code within the window requirement code that we were proposing, that is, that has essentially coalesced into the proposed amendment, which is located in pages 358 to 360 in your PDF packet, if you'd like to peruse it. The summary of the amendment, the proposed amendment. the proposed amendment, is that the side and rear of garages, garage facades that face either a public or private street would require glazing treatment. I think the most common scenario where this would occur would be on like corner lots where a garage is closest to the corner, whether that's attached or detached. And then that side facade would be the one that's facing the public or private right of way. And then that would trigger that requirement for windows.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would just ask the question, I mean, just from a safety standpoint, having windows on the garages letting people look in to see what valuables you have and why they may want to break into the house. I'm just not sure that that makes much sense at all to me.
Did you want to comment on that, Spencer?
So the genesis of this whole change is that we, during the process of making these amendments, we're looking at how to provide some additional flexibility about around where garages can be placed. One of those scenarios that we anticipate is that a garage may sit in front of, forward of the house, but face sideways, which is, sometimes you see that around. One of the concerns that we've tried to address in the code is the problem of blank walls up against the street where the public, you know, is impacted by a lack of windows along the street as they're traveling along. So the the goal here was really to say, if somebody wants to have a garage be sort of a dominant feature on the front of the house, that garage needs to have a window because our design requirements in all other cases are saying you need to have windows on your facade. We want windows to provide for that, I guess, permeability and visibility to the street. That's, that's kind of what we're going for. I understand your concern about somebody wanting to.
Especially if it's fronting on a street.
Yeah. So this would only impact a garage that's fronting the street. If your, if your garage is not fronting onto the street like that, there is no requirement for a window.
So why not just allow them to sort of choose some different options? I mean, you could basically have like fake window, a fake sort of, you know, something that gives it more than a blank wall, right? We could set up some design standards. You can choose from four of these things, one of them is windows, and let the builder or the the home buyer make that determination.
I mean, I think there's a, there are probably ways we could set that up. I don't know, at least in terms of what we worked through with Plan Commission, I don't think that there was a desire to, let our alarms buzz here. I don't, I don't think there was, there wasn't, I think, a good option outside of just windows. It would be possible for somebody who's concerned about somebody accessing or looking into their garage to have the window and then on the inside of it, block it off in such a way that you can't actually see into the garage or access it. So there are probably ways for somebody with that concern to deal with it.
But I guess if you're going to block it off anyway, I mean, why not just a fake window? I mean, at the end of the day, I just, I just don't understand why, why we're mandating this, I guess.
Yeah, it was, it was really trying to address, this is a standard that applies in other situations where you have a facade facing the street. So would we give garages special treatment, especially if we, and part of the, this is not part of the amendment, but part of the proposal, is to loosen and provide some additional flexibility for where garages are placed. So it was recognizing that if we're providing that flexibility, we want them to provide some, some level of design or meeting design standards that everything else has to meet.
Gotcha. Thank you.
But I think that's, I take your point. That's probably a concern for some people.
Any other questions? Councilmember Bingle.
So my question's on the amendment, sorry. And I think we had said it was largely technical. Can we talk about the Wilkinson Amendment right now?
Yeah.
Yes. And I'll let Spencer respond to that since he basically wrote it, but.
Do you want to speak to it or do you want to take that? Okay. So the issue is, in talking with current planning, as they looked at the code that we presented at the Urban Experience Committee, they recognized that it wasn't very clear how or whether, I think there's language in there currently that says other standards would apply to a garage facade that is facing the street like that. But it doesn't really say how they apply. And so this language is attempting to clarify that in terms of how the windows are treated, what that, what that means for it to apply in that way. Does that, if there's a specific portion of text, I'm happy to answer questions about it.
No, no, I just wanted to know the general.
But that's sort of the general idea. There was a feeling that it wasn't detailed enough to provide either the planners administering the code or the public with the kind of information they needed to know how they can meet the code.
Okay.
Any other questions? Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's moved in second to adopt the Wilkinson Amendment. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes?
No.
Abstentions? That passes. Thank you. Ms. Maggie?
Okay, moving just a couple items below, there's a request to withdraw ordinance C 36631.
So entertain a motion for withdrawal. Councilmember Cathcart?
Just looking for some background on the proposal and then the withdrawal.
Okay.
First, I'll just move to withdraw.
Second.
And I'll speak to that. So this came to me from some employees about it and doing some more research. It doesn't seem like it was accurate on how often we need to do the audits. It seems like we are following policy. So we just got quick on filing when we were really doing more research. So we weren't ready to actually file it. We just filed away and then we're like, oops, got too fast.
You have a questions around the withdrawal of the asset forfeiture program audit? It's been moved in second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Abstention, that passes. Thank you.
Okay, Dan Buller is going to come back down for ordinance C 36632.
And just quickly, Dan, before you speak, was this the one Jesse Banks was going to speak to as well? Spencer already the one. That's the next one. Okay, go ahead, Dan.
Okay. Just a general overview of what we're talking about here?
So can I, because I think I was the one who asked for this. So if this is the one where it was like, there's this unique piece, we're giving them $100,000, is that this one? Okay. I don't remember us ever talking about eminent domain. And so that's where my question came from. Can you?
Sure. Yeah. Okay. So up on the screen here, just, I don't know if you can see, but there's green on the left. And would it be okay if I gave you like five sentences of background?
Totally, yeah.
Okay. So there's the, the green on the left is one pressure zone, and the pink on the right, which is a little harder to see, is a different pressure zone. And every time you go through a pressure zone, it's boostin' water from one tank down here to one tank up here. And so that people's pressures are between 50 and 90 PSI. And when we're replacing a booster station, we have really narrow constraints, because if you go up the hill, then all of a sudden, everybody who had, you know, 50 PSI, you went up the hill, and now the people only have, you know, 45 PSI. And so you're really constrained as to where you can put this. We happened to find a, an open site, just a couple hundred feet up the hill, negotiated with the property owner, came to an agreement, and were, was working with planning to, you know, looking what the zoning was and everything. And it came to our attention that what we knew, there was a drainage way going through the site, which from an engineering perspective is not difficult. But because it was written into the plat that this was a drainage way that shouldn't be developed on, you know, that's a problem. But it's not a problem because we build essential pub, public facilities. We built 100-foot reservoirs where people aren't allowed to do that all the time. So there are certain exceptions made for city purposes. However, to, to comply with the conditions of the plat, we either need to go through a complicated replating process, which we've not done and was complicated, or we could go through the condemnation process. Condemnation usually implies there's hostility and animosity and disagreement on the part of the folks who own the property to be acquired. In this case, no such condition exists. We've got a willing property owner and a willing city. We've come to an agreement of about 70 grand, assuming you folks approve it. And so in this case, the condemnation is for purposes of complying with codes relating to all of that. So there, so that, do you have to answer your question?
So the eminent domain basically allows us to skip a very complicated process, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Dan? Thank you, Melissa.
Okay, ordinance C 36633.
I'll just kick us off. This is the one that Commissioner Banks will be speaking to. So you may recall, this was presented at Urban Experience by Megan Duvall, Historic Preservation Officer. I think she did a pretty good job of explaining the overall proposal and also highlighting that there were some differences of opinion between the Plan Commission and Landmarks Commission versions that came before you. I heard from some council members there was a desire to hear a little bit more about Plan Commission's thinking behind the recommendation that they made. And Plan Commission nominated Commissioner Jesse Banks to come and share the Plan Commission view on this. So he's here and I'll turn the time over to him.
Good evening, councilmembers. Unfortunately, for some reason, I'm unable to get my camera to turn on. So I apologize for that. But thank you for a few minutes to chat with you tonight. I wanted to just cover a few of the reasons why the Plan Commission felt that these amendments to the Historic Preservation proposal were valid. And I think, first of all, I want to say above all, I think we all felt, and I certainly felt, that Historic Preservation and creative thinking about ways to disincentivize the speculative demolition of potentially eligible buildings is a laudable goal. And it's something that we ought to be doing, and we ought to be thinking about creative ways to do, because we don't have any viable means really to prevent the demolition of these buildings. And so we have to be a little bit more creative. The issue that I found in the proposal from Historic Preservation, and I think where we differ a little bit from the Landmarks Commission, is in the proposal to limit the size of the replacement structure. In other words, if a developer is proposing to demolish a potentially listed structure, they need to get the replacement structure approved. And there were proposed limits placed on that replacement structure through a variety of zones in the city. The challenge that we had were areas where those districts overlap with the Centers and Corridors Zone or the Downtown Zone. And I think really where we came to consensus was, you know, if there is an area that is, that is outside of one of those areas that is designed to accommodate the majority of the growth as contemplated by the comprehensive plan, then perhaps there's some argument about, you know, reining in scale and those sorts of things. But the comprehensive plan is quite, quite direct about Centers and Corridors Zones. And I think by extension, the Downtown Zone is those are the areas where the growth is to be directed. And I think efforts to rein that in based on what is effectively the ghost of a building that used to be there, I found, and the rest of the Plan Commissioners agreed with me, that, that that was just antithetical to what the comprehensive plan had contemplated for those particular growth areas. So to be clear, this is not any sort of issue over limiting the size or scope of buildings in other districts that are not within Centers and Corridors or Downtown Zones, but that the Centers and Corridors and Downtown Zones ought to be areas where we expect to see the maximum growth allowable. And we should really, really bend over backwards in an attempt to not limit that growth in any way.
Any questions for Mr. Banks? Thank you, Jesse, for that.
You're welcome.
Any other concerns? All right, hearing none. Did you want to speak, Megan?
Maybe if I could just clarify one.
Okay.
Thanks, and I appreciate Commissioner Banks sharing the Plan Commission's perspective. I just want to make sure that we understand that this is only in the downtown when it's a contributing property that's already in a National Register Historic District. So there are, there are three National Register Districts downtown. This is only when somebody is proposing to demolish a historic building within a National Register Historic District. That's the only time we would have a cap on the size of the replacement structure. Otherwise, if it's in downtown and it's eligible, but it's not in a National Register District, they can build as big as they are allowed. So it's just in these districts, yes.
Is there, I mean, I feel like it should be easy to do, is there a list of properties that essentially meet these numbers?
Yeah.
So that we can look at that and actually understand?
Sure. Sure.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
And then on the question of Centers and Corridors, what is the overlay between
the Historic Districts and our Centers and Corridors?
Not much, very, very small. As a matter of fact, the only, the biggest one is really Hilliard, but Hilliard is also a local Historic District. So we have the ability to actually deny demolitions in Hilliard, so it doesn't really affect that one. Otherwise, it's very small overlapping areas where there's maybe two properties. One I can think of is in Rockwood Boulevard, or the Rockwood Historic District, the old Lindemans, that's now the Little Euro. And I believe there's one other building that ends up being in Centers and Corridors and also within that district. So it's very, very limited outside of downtown. Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other questions?
Yep, that takes you through the January 13 agenda.
Can I get a motion then to approve the advanced agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions? That is approved. We are in recess until 6:00 PM. Please note that at 5:00 tonight, in the Jim Chase Gallery, we will have a Haitian community here for Community Days. So if you get down here early, please join us. We'll see you there. Thank you.